October the 6th, 2020 is officially in session at 3:36. I think it is 3:36. A pledge of allegiance will be done by Mrs. Jane Crawford and I will do the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with unity and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, God, we come today calling upon your name, expressing a need for your help and for your guidance. For God, in certain times like these, we need to lean and depend on you. God, we pray for our district, our superintendent, our school board, God, those that make the decisions that sometimes don't seem popular, but God, they are made with the best intentions and with a pure heart, thinking about our children. And so, God, we pray right now that you will continue to guide us as we make decisions that some may not agree with, but again, we do the very best we can and we make a faith effort to do what is in the best interest of our children. Now, God, we pray for all of our teachers, our administrators. God, we pray that we will provide safety, provide curriculum, provide whatever is needed, God, that our children will grow and glow and that our teachers will feel safe and our bus drivers, our food service workers, leaving no one out, God, and no stone unturned. We just ask for your help and your guidance and your leadership. Now, Father, on our steps, our minds, our hearts and our tongues, as we conduct this meeting and conduct the affairs of this district, we ask all of this in the name of your Son. Amen. This time, we will have our presentation, Lamp of Learning Awards by Mrs. Gail Kayhan. And while Mrs. Kayhan is coming, we do want to apologize for starting late. Our executive session did run a little over and we do value your time.
My name is Cherie Clayton. I am the president of Alpha Delta Kappa. Alpha Delta Kappa is an international honorary organization for women educators that provides a wealth of opportunities for leadership development and networking through workshops, training sessions, conferences, and conventions. Perhaps our greatest opportunity Alpha Delta Kappa provides is the chance to make a difference. Around the world, Alpha Delta Kappa members combine their energies and talents to enrich their lives and the lives of others through thousands of heartwarming, community-based altruistic projects. In the past two years alone, Alpha Delta Kappa members have given nearly $12 million in monetary and other gifts. Nearly $2 million in scholarships have been provided, more than 2 million hours of volunteer service to the communities. It is our district's distinct pleasure, excuse me, to continue this trend here in Putnam County School District by awarding the top fifth grader at each elementary school with a monetary reward of $50 to recognize their academic and educational accomplishments with the Lamp of Learning Award. These students were chosen by their teachers for their great all-around student leadership, both academically and socially. These students also met the following criteria: excels academically, behaves well in class, exhibits a positive attitude, and helps his or her classmates, and participates in school, community, and church activities. Unfortunately, we can't have these students here with us, but Ms. Gail Kayhan is going to read off the names of our students that will be receiving the Lamp of Learning Award from Alpha Delta Kappa.
Representing Mellon Elementary School is Harmony Strausser. Representing James A. Long Elementary School is Jocelyn Bradshaw. Representing Browning Pierce Elementary School is Michaela Burnett. E.H. Miller Elementary School's child is Bo Baron. Representing Melrose Elementary School is Haley Starling. Representing Children's Reading Center Charter School is Gianna Bohannon. Representing Kelly Smith Elementary School is Sam Duran. Representing Mosley Elementary School is Cory Black. Representing Interlochen Elementary School is Silas Cabot. Representing Middleton Bernie Elementary School is Trevor Delaney. And representing Aquila Elementary School is Annabelle Lamb. And that concludes our 11 students.
Thank you all for doing this.
Larry Kayhan didn't get an award? I'm just kidding.
He's an adult now. He's supposed to be an adult.
He got a fishing award.
Yeah, they did say that we're going to be presenting those to the students later.
Is everyone in the back? Do we do it at the schools or here? We're going to take them to the sixth grade centers where the children are this year.
That's what Felicia said.
Flight's coming, wait.
We'll be sexually distant, I guess.
And if everyone will look this way.
I wish you would have a smile.
Thank you again, ladies, Mrs. Clayton and Mrs. Kayhan. Next, we will have a presentation, ESS Recognition of Substitutes.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, Kristen Carroll. And I am here to introduce Tricia Baker from ESS. She's the recruiter for them and she is going to be recognizing some individuals today. So I want to turn it over to her.
Thank you. So with this year looking a little bit different, we decided to congratulate and show our appreciation to our subs who have worked every day since the start of the school year. So I went through and I picked four subs that we, there were more, but we couldn't recognize everybody. But we did pick four and I sent out to the secretaries and the principals at the schools and just to find out a little bit more about them. So I'm just going to read what they sent us. This is from C.H. Price Middle School. Ms. Nikki Jackson is a building-based substitute teacher for Price Middle School. She is dependable, positive, and always arrives with a friendly smile. She is flexible and willing to substitute in various classrooms at a moment's notice. Without hesitation, she also assists with filing, cafeteria duty, and wherever the need arises. Ms. Jackson is a true asset to Price Middle School. This is from Middleton Bernie Elementary School. I want to say thank you to ESS for allowing us to have an onsite sub. Ms. Ashley Jones has been amazing. She's become part of our MBS family, always there to help and fill in when needed. I can always count on Ashley and she's always willing to fill in with a smile. We couldn't ask for more. Thank you, Mrs. Jones. This is from Kelly Smith Elementary School. Tammy Driggers is a huge blessing to the Kelly Smith family. From welcoming kids on campus at drop-off every single morning to packing up and delivering shark packs weekly, to filling in at a moment's notice anywhere she is needed, Tammy is a valued member of our Kelly Smith team. Tammy's willingness to help everyone and drive to stay busy makes her a valued asset to our school. And this is from James A. Long Elementary School. Ms. Carol Dallas started the school year with James A. Long as a long-term sub for pre-K ESE. She has been here every day with a great attitude and eager to get to work. The students in the class love her and I think I can speak for Ms. Parsons as well when I say we are all thankful to have her. Not only is Ms. Dallas with us this year, she took a position last year as well to be one of our one-on-one subs. Ms. Dallas has shown great dedication to James A. Long and we are so glad to have her as part of the James A. Long family. So we're going to present them tomorrow. I'm going to go around to the specific schools that they've been at. We're going to give them a certificate and just a $25 gift card to show them that we appreciate them and to just let our subs know that we're in the schools every single day. It's been great. That's pretty much it. And here, we did talk about the building level sub. We have placed building level subs. We're trying to have one at every single school across the district, so that's 17 of them. We have placed, there's only four schools that have not had that place yet, so it's working phenomenally. These subs know that they have to be ready for anything. They're not just necessarily assigned to a classroom where they teach all day. They do have to help in the cafeteria. They're very mobile, which has worked phenomenally, especially with how things look this year. We just need helping hands and it's great because the students know who they are. So we're just excited to be here again this year with you guys and continuing to provide substitutes.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir.
Do y'all have a spare agenda?
Yes, sir.
Jackie?
Jackie's, I think she's heading out there to get one.
She's going to check and see if we have any public comments.
Okay. Evidently, we don't have any public comments.
Kristen, is she getting a cover? A spare agenda? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackie.
No public comments.
I needed it. I needed it.
All right, we have no public comments at this time. We will have a public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
District, Florida Safety Assessment Tool.
statute and the Marjory Stoneman Douglas Public Safety Act and the resulting recommendations from the MSD Commission. Florida statute directs each school and each school district to complete a safety and security best practice self-assessment on an annual basis. These self-assessments allow each school and the district to review programs on violence prevention, physical security, fire safety, regulations associated with safety or risk management, other programs usually linked to law enforcement and security, and the all-hazard approach to critical incidents that is the basis of emergency management. Based on these self-finding, the district is required to provide recommendations to the school board, which identify activities the board should implement in order to improve school safety. Annually, the school board must receive these self-assessments, I'm sorry, receive the results of these self-assessments at a publicly noticed district school board meeting to provide the public an opportunity to hear the district school board members discuss and take action on the report findings. So as a part of this self-assessment, one thing that we have to identify are some of the measures that have been put in place over the past year. So this is a brief list of some of those. We've used funding from Target Hardening Grant that was provided to our district and portions of some general funds to update and improve territorial reinforcements, access control, and single point of entries to our schools. We've upgraded our natural surveillance efforts by adding and repairing lighting. We've added building numbers through signage and classroom window signs to help aid first We've continued behavioral threat assessment team trainings. We've continued our youth mental health first aid trainings. And we've updated our CESSAR guidelines and CESSAR trainings. In addition, we've continued to expand our Bleed Control Campaign. Over the course of this past year, we've provided kits for our buses. We've provided training for our transportation and cafeteria staff and continued training for substitutes and new employees. And I'd like to, if you don't mind, recognize the Putnam County Health Department and their efforts in doing that. They have provided personnel to help us conduct all of those trainings. We had our school community input and review task force. We had them meet so that we could do a review and listen to recommendations and ideas for our comprehensive school safety and emergency operations plan. We continued to provide our quick reference guides for emergencies to our staff. And this past year, we also added a planning checklist for our staff members. We provided active assailant options-based lockdown training and safer or safest area training to all of our teachers across the district. And I would like to thank the Putnam County Sheriff's Office for their role in helping us do that. We've conducted some drills and exercises this past year, one of which was an inactive assailant that we did at every school in the district. We continue to provide our training videos for active assailants that we work in conjunction with, or actually, the sheriff's office works in conjunction with us and our media department to do that. And we've expanded the school safety officer program and completed internal audits for each of our schools related to safety measures. The school safety assessments for our schools focus on five areas of safety and security: school data, school infrastructure, school security, prevention and threat management, and a campus tour. Each school assembled an assessment team of stakeholders and subject matter experts, including representatives of law enforcement and fire agencies, to exercise the assessment tool and develop a plan for enhancement. Overall, the school safety assessment teams found that our current plans, policies, procedures, and actions meet the majority of the best practices outlined in our self-assessment tool. Focus areas for our individual schools as a result of these assessments are summarized in the actions to be taken, which is a section we'll go through here shortly below. Our district assessment focuses on six general areas of the district's safety and security program, which include community collaboration, support and prevention, emergency planning, training, staffing, and physical security. Again, overall, our district's plans, policies, procedures, and actions meet the majority of the best practices outlined in the assessment tool. And we will cover here next any of the actions that are recommended to be taken. So the recommended actions, as they relate to Target Hardening Strategies and available funding, would include glass and window hardening for our exterior boundaries that establish a single point of entry, to include classrooms, areas used as classrooms, and student common areas. Territorial reinforcement efforts related to the individual school needs identified in their individual school assessment. Such items could be fencing gates, security hardware, or anything needed to establish and enhance points of entry. Those related to mechanical and technological would be items such as a recommendation to upgrade our fire panels to support positive alarm sequencing, obtaining a redundant or backup communications ability, implementing a radio-to-intercom bridge on select school radios or portable handheld radios, and, I'm sorry, adding the identified security camera needs in each of those individual school assessments. The fiscal impacts related to these, the fire panels are estimated to be roughly $12,000 each, which would be about $216,000 across the, for across the district. The redundant or secondary notification system that we discussed would be roughly about $15,000 with a recurring cost of about $15,000 a year. Window hardening efforts, really the only thing I can give you on that, the estimate would be anywhere between $7 and $125 per square foot. And the square footage would, you know, have to be determined per site and as funds come The radio-to-intercom bridge, those are estimated at about $3,000 per school. Security cameras that are identified in the school assessments would run anywhere from about $8,000 to $12,000 per system. And any of the territorial or access control reinforcements that are identified in the school assessments, you know, like fencing gating type of stuff, those costs are unknown until we would have estimates provided on each individual need. As far as the timeline on all of these, we would estimate that implementation and completion would be anywhere between one and three years. So in conclusion, and in accordance with provisions outlined in Chapter 1,006, the recommendations and strategies above related to school safety improvement are presented for your consideration. But I would ask before you get into any discussion, input, or approval, please remember also it's asked that you provide any recommendations as a board for the Florida Department of Education to consider, so they can then push that up to the governor or the State Board of Education as well. So with that, I'll leave it in your hands and take any questions.
I would think the superintendent would pass on to the board as protocol, the recommendations that we seek and we have earlier spoken about in workshops.
Yes, sir.
So I guess everybody, you want us, do we need to make a motion on this, Charlie? And then in a second, then they can discuss it.
To approve the plan for Travis's.
I'll make a motion that we approve the plan.
I second it. It's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that we approved the plan for the District Florida School Safety Assessment Tool and seconded by Mrs. Jane Crawford. Any discussion?
Yeah, I was going to say the fact that we had plenty of time for discussion during our executive meeting.
Right. Okay. And all is well. Okay.
Yeah, the only other thing I would mention before you take a vote is the, if you do, you may not, but if you do have any recommendations for DOE to push up.
Do we have to say it right now?
Yes, because that would be, and again, as a board, that's your call, but that would need to be included before I finalize the report and push it up.
I would expect that we discussed earlier, significant things that if, that can be afforded, that the superintendent heard us and he will go back through the list and submit it on our behalf and your behalf. Okay?
That's fine. Yes, sir.
All right, any more discussion? All right. All in favor? Let it be known by I. Opposers, here are none. Our motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'd just like to thank you for all the work that you.
You and your team.
And your team. Very thorough.
Thank you, Travis.
Okay, at this time, E, items approved by the superintendent under the emergency powers, the 21st Century Program at Interlochen High School, payment to employees.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept item E, items that were approved by the superintendent to the 21st Century Program at Interlochen.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept the items that were approved by the superintendent under the emergency powers, the 21st Century Program at Interlochen High, payment to employees, and seconded by Mr. David Buckles. All in favor? Let it be known by I. Opposers, here are none. Our motion carries 5-0. Okay, at this time, we are now ready for our consent agenda. We will start with you, Mrs. Pickens.
I don't have anything to pull.
All right, Mr. Buckles?
I don't have anything to pull.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Crawford? Mr. McInnes?
I have nothing to pull.
And I have nothing to pull. All right, so can we get us a question?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the consent agenda as written and seconded by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor? Let it be known by I. Opposers, here are none. Our motion carries 5-0. We do not have any emergency items to come before the board. We do not have any unfinished business, but we do have item O, discussion of new business. Item number one, discussion, input, and action, resolution to grant emergency powers due to the superintendent.
I'll make a motion that we continue to give emergency powers to the superintendent.
I'll second that. All right, it's been motioned by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we continue to extend the emergency powers that are granted to the superintendent and it was seconded by Mrs. Jane Crawford. All in favor? Let it be known by I. Opposers, here are none. Our motion carries 5-0. Item number two, consensus to advertise new policy, number 7544, use of social media.
Charlie going roll call this?
District one?
Yes, advertise.
District two?
Advertise.
District three?
Advertise.
District four?
Advertise.
District five?
Advertise.
Okay, consensus to advertise the amendments to the policies. We have six that are listed here and you can see them printed on the agenda and so we will allow attorney to take them one at a time.
Okay, the first one is for policy number 6550. District one?
Advertise.
District two?
Advertise.
District three?
Advertise.
District four?
Advertise.
District five?
Advertise.
Okay, the next one is amendment to policy 7530.02. District one?
Advertise.
District two?
Advertise.
District three?
Advertise.
District four?
Advertise.
District five?
Advertise.
All right, the next one is amendment to policy 7540. District one?
Advertise.
District two?
Advertise.
District three?
Advertise.
District four?
Advertise.
District five?
Advertise.
The next one is the amendment to policy 7540.02. District one?
Advertise.
District two?
Advertise.
District three?
Advertise.
District four?
Advertise.
District five?
Advertise.
The next one is amendment to policy number 7540.04. District one?
Advertise.
District two?
Advertise.
District three?
Advertise.
District four?
Advertise.
District five?
Advertise.
The last one is amendment to policy number 8315. District one?
Advertise.
District two?
Advertise.
District three?
Advertise.
District four?
Advertise.
District five?
Advertise.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we will have our reports from the board. We'll start with you, Mr. McInnes, and the superintendent and their attorney, our attorney. So we will go with the board members, then we will go to Attorney Douglas, and then our superintendent.
Okay. Congratulate the 11 5th graders there, the Lamp of Learning Award. It's an awesome, awesome award. I know they are fine students to get that award. I know they are fine students to get that award. And also congratulations to the substitute heroes, being a substitute six years ago for about five years, it's a very, it's very nice of them to honor those kind of employees that has stuck through all the, all the mess, so just want to thank them. And I want to thank again our teachers, bus drivers and food service employees, as well as our custodians and our staff for all their efforts to make this school year go as smooth as possible. And appreciate the district's security presentation that we had earlier. Been continuing with the FSBA training, did take in the parish bulls at Interlocken. Interlocken was successful, looked really sharp, it was a team from Orlando area first year, so Interlocken kind of had their way with them. Interlocken had their continued winning ways in Belle away game, which I didn't make it, but that's a cow town out there and, you know, there's more cows than people, so they did an awesome job. And this week they play at home against Pearson Taylor. I want to thank our IT department especially, I, where you can't make all these activities because of the COVID and especially some of the academic awards and such and the sporting events that we can see them on our district YouTube, which is wonderful. And I want to commend the FFA's groups in our community that helped with Feed the Need and our JFG program that really just came about and just threw in a lot of support for all of our community needs there. And I did receive a letter, I received four letters and I can read them to you now, right? It's a, it's a letter request for, in regards to the Interlocken High School football field being named after Coach Doug Felter, Feltonner. During the time, he was able to observe Doug's passion and commitment in guiding young people in a path leading to excellence and success in the classroom and on the playing field. Because of Doug's outstanding leadership and su- success as a head coach and athletic director, expectations were elevated within the entire athletic department. Athletic programs earned and received district, regional and state recognition for championships and sportmanship. As the athletic director, Doug was responsible for every aspect of the entire athletic department including the many administrative duties associated with the position. Doug's responsibilities also include maintaining all the athletic fields and facilities in which he took great pride. His dedication and intensive work ethic transformed the athletic fields and facilities into places of pride and admiration. From the gloss-like shine of the gymnasium floor to the carpet-like condition of the baseball and football fields, Doug was able to create a memorable experience for the love of thousands of people who attend the many events of Interlocken High. Doug Feltonner's name has become synonymous with Interlocken High School. His loyalty and long tenure with this institution has positively impacted students, teachers, administrators and members of the community. Therefore, I strongly recommend and encourage all of you to name the football field at Interlocken High School after Doug Feltonner. He is most deserving of this honor. And this is sincerely John R. Theobald.
Thank you.
If you want to take those.
Please.
There's four of them.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Well, there's four of them, if you want them to read all four of them.
No, you're not.
Or I'm assuming.
They're all along the same vein in support of.
Yes.
Okay.
And my, my personal experience with Coach Feltonner is, he, his famous saying was, get off the field, because he cared for that field, I mean, that was his, um.
That we had to build a band.
Get off the field.
We had to build a band, we had to build a band field just to keep them on.
Madam Chair, if you'd like for us, for the, Mr. Bowling to have the, by our procedures, form a committee and come back with a recommendation.
And he can get with each, each of us.
Each board member.
And we'll give you a name.
That'd be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. McInnes. Mrs. Crawford?
Um, just to reiterate some of the things that Mr. McInnes said, I'd like to congratulate the subs that are winning these awards. That's a great thing to do, to recognize them, because that is a hard job and they don't get a whole lot of thanks. I know I was a sub when I was going to college and, woo, I, it was not fun a lot of the time. Thanks to ADK, they're always so sweet to present those awards to our top 5th graders. I'm just sorry they couldn't bring them in this year as they normally do. I just want to urge everyone to continue following safety protocol, even though our state has been opened up apparently for any kind of activity. I think we need to stay the course and continue doing everything that we're doing and to keep our teachers safe and our children safe. I also want to thank our teacher, all of our teachers actually, but especially those that are having to do face-to-face teaching and online teaching. It, you know, it is a real challenge and there is a lot of work involved in that online teaching, plus having students in class. I know some of the classes have, you know, 40, 45 kids in them, they still have to grade those assessments and, and do those lesson plans for them. I too, while I finished the FSB training, I was so glad, so we're, we're on the way to being certified board members again, some of us. And the last thing I wanted to say is our Kuanis, and I haven't been back, have you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, we're starting doing our Terrific Kid like we do every year and I don't know how.
Had the first one today.
Did, did you get to go?
No, but they did it live stream.
Oh, did they?
And Mr. Overturf reported back, did it Browning Pierce and we actually, and I actually looked at the screen, we have 70 people observing it.
Oh, that's wonderful, so parents and grandparents and, so instead of going to the school, they'll be able to watch it on our YouTube channel or.
Yeah, it's on our, on our live stream off the website.
But I would just like to give a shout out to Kuanis at the Azavea City, of which I'm a member, and our superintendent is Charles Overturf. He has not missed a presentation to these students since the inception of Terrific Kid, it seems like.
27 years ago.
27 years ago, I knew it was more than 20. So if you see Charles out and about, please thank him, because that, that, it's a lot of work to get all that together and get the, everything that we present to each student ready, and he is to be commended for that.
Amen. Good family.
And that's all. Thank you so much, Mrs. Crawford. Mr. Buckles?
Uh, volleyball season winding down, I'm fixing to leave here when we shut down and head to Palm Coast, so watch volleyball games till later in the evening, so I'll pass it on in the interest of time.
Actually, I went to the Crescent City volleyball game against Flagler Palm Coast last night and we did lose three to one, but it was an excellent match, it was wonderful and.
Could you hear me yelling at you last week when I'd holler, hi?
No, I, no, I try, I can't hear that well.
Okay.
And I did enjoy proctoring the test, I had a concern, we were option two retakes and there were like six or seven kids showing up out of 20 or more that were on the, to be tested, so I, I'm sure that was probably, you know, an example of how it is across the district. So again, those option two kids may just not be logging on and getting the stuff done and their parents may think they're doing that.
And they also need to realize you did retake city, they got past the test to graduate away, so.
And so they just lost an opportunity.
Yeah.
So, um, so hopefully they'll become more aware. And I, the substitutes, actually Ashley Jones, that's the Crescent City volleyball coach, head coach is, was recognized as one of the substitutes.
Wonderful.
And she's, she told me last night that she was offered a parapro position at Middleton Bernie, so they're upset, I'm sure, to lose her as a building sub, but, but she was very excited about it.
In relation to Shandy Jones?
Um, no, she's, actually she's my pastor's wife, Daniel Jones's wife. And speaking of, we have a feeding northeast Florida truck that comes the first Wednesday of every month to South Putnam Church and that'll be tomorrow at nine o'clock when the truck gets there and gets unloaded, really, but nine o'clock. And I also am finishing up training for the FSBA, I was very glad to see that our, our conference will be virtual and so hopefully Mr. McInnes and I will be certified board members after we do the finance class, we still have to do that too. And that's, oh, and I had Trevor Delaney as one of my SPC kids, Sunday School class members, and he was the fifth, one of, the 5th grade representative for Middleton Bernie.
Then I'll sound second.
Uh, his uncle is the head football coach, his father is the, was a dean, but now he's like a teacher on specialist assignment, and his mother's an art teacher, his grandmother taught elementary.
Is that Rose Delaney?
Rose Delaney is his aunt.
Okay.
Erin Delaney and Travis are his parents. And homecoming was changed from Friday night to Saturday night, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Real quick, just talking about the new normal, which I'll never get used to, but I did have an opportunity last Thursday, again, as I have for the last 23 years, announced the junior varsity football game.
What is the same crowd?
And you, see, you're trying to steal your fun.
Oh, my God.
Good, gracious, you had your opportunity.
She can.
And I got so tickled, I thought about you.
Roll, roll your eyes at her, Sandy, and see what she says.
Oakley was, I love it. Oakley was a makeup game that they, because with such uncertainty which schools will be in and out because of everything that's going on, so Coach Fells, he had to work the clock and he was telling us that that was a pickup game that Oakley did in 8A school, so you know.
Oh, my gosh.
The score was, was out there. And at first I thought they were, were Eagles, he told me they were Eagles, so I was saying, I got so tickled, I did say a flock of Eagles, but then it turned out they were knights, so I had to go back to a host of knights, but I thought about you and I got so tickled, but that's, that's the new normal. I did want to say, reiterate what you said about safety, we're encouraging, even though things have been opened up, we still have to practice safety, our covering, our distancing, our washing of our hands, even with our babies. And finally, the employee trainings with, which Mrs. Crawford found out that we can use for our, our points toward the Florida school board. Yes. There's seven trainings on there and one, you have to take an assessment at the end, so it's not like you can just turn it on and you watch TV, you can't do that. There's an assessment and you must pass it. Well, title nine, I thought I knew. Oh, my God.
It was so interesting.
But it was, all of them were interesting, they got down, they are excellent. And my question was, all employees are required to take, to do the, awesome, awesome. So it puts us all on the same page. I'm going to find out how I can send those off and get my credit for it. And with that said, I thank you, all right? Mrs. Douglas, attorney?
This is Goldwell in the legal department. That's all I have to report.
But I hit Rick, you tickled me because that's what we're doing, my decision, that's what I'm doing. All right, Mrs. Superintendent?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, and just to reiterate, we are focusing on our safety protocols, we, we have not lightened up, we're tightening up.
Mm-hmm.
And Mr. Bowling's team is, is traveling, making sure that, inspecting and making sure that everyone is doing what they said, what they told us they were doing, so we definitely are on that, to make sure our kids are safe. I'd like to take a moment, if you don't mind, since I have an opportunity, I want to share that this month, October, is Rett syndrome awareness month, and I mentioned this last year, and that's R-E-T-T, Rett syndrome awareness month. And if you don't mind me just reading a little short thing, Rett syndrome is a rare genetic neurological disorder, leads to severe impairments affecting nearly every aspect of the child's life. Rett syndrome occurs worldwide in one out of every 10,000 female births and is even rarer in boys. My granddaughter, Carson, is five years old and she's currently a kindergarten student at Kelly Smith. She had a normal birth and hit many of her early milestones and then she went through a regression after her first birthday. She lost her speech, her use of her hands and struggles walking and eating. The hallmark trait of Rett syndrome is repetitive hand movements and hand wringing. Carson does this and it seems to be getting even more severe. She can hear and understand everything and is eager to learn. Since she cannot speak or use her hands to sign, she uses her eyes to communicate. She can tell you yes and no and so much more with just her eyes. She also uses technology, there's an, there's an actual machine, I think I told you this last year, an eye gaze device, it's called a Tobey, to communicate. This allows her to share more and it helps her share and communicate in school. She's still learning this every day and it's an ongoing process. She can actually look at an icon on there for two seconds and it talks for her, so it's amazing.
Wow, it is awesome.
She had a, she had a wonderful pre-K teacher last year, Mandy Riggsby, and she has and continues to have Jesse Pagent, who's her aide, and she's wonderful. And her current teacher is Haley Ridenhour, who's a brand new teacher, as well as an awesome school therapist, speech and OT and PT. We're very thankful for those who worked to help Carson. She loves her school, her classmates and learning. She's currently, as of today, her parents made a trip to Birmingham, Alabama and is driving back the same day to visit her Rett specialist in Birmingham. They take, they take part in a natural history study to help with Rett research and she's been involved in a clinical drug trial to help further research in hope of finding a cure. So if you want more information, go to retsyndrome.org. So thank you for allowing me to read that.
Thank you for that update.
Thank you for sharing.
Yep. One day I'll bring her in here and introduce you to her, she's quite a girl.
She's a, a love.
Yeah. She's a, she definitely, if you can ever see somebody talk with her eyes, she can definitely do it. This month is also National Principal Month and I just want to give a shout out to all the work our principals are doing. I'll tell you what, this is one of these things that principals never went to school to deal with, but, yeah, they are dealing with some unprecedented challenges and my hats are off to them and, and all the stuff they're dealing with, finding subs and, you know, dealing with, you know, scheduling and kids coming back and forth from option one, option two and people being out on, you know, quarantined, there's just so many challenges and I can't thank them enough for their dedication. Also want to point out, hats off to our media department, we're doing a video series this month and last, last Monday we released a video on how well our Cambridge program's doing, I think I've mentioned that to you, and all the free college tuition our students are getting because of the Cambridge A's diplomas. Yesterday we released a video on SEL, Social Emotional Learning, especially this, during this period of time, that is so important and all the things we're doing to reach out and help students overcome a lot of these challenges. Next week, we're going to do a video series or release one, we're filming it now, on our new net, new normal in school and what that looks like. We'll be doing a lot of footage from schools and give people a firsthand look on what that looks like. And our final video release, which will be later on October, we'll be thanking all those people who are partners, who have really helped us during this time and even before then. We, we can't do this alone, we're not in a vacuum, we have to, you know, work with our partners and we have good relationships, so we want to reach out and thank those partners. Next week, I'm sorry, two weeks from today, tonight is our State of the District, it's our six o'clock board meeting and that's, every year we bring that to you as, as a method of showing you all the progress we made. Our staff has worked hard on getting that information together and I think you'll be very pleased.
You say tonight?
Uh, two weeks from tonight.
Oh, okay.
6:00 PM, two weeks on the 20th.
I'll be in Palm Coast, let me know how it goes.
Yeah. Finally, I just want to bring you up to date on the last, last board meeting, I believe you're updated on Edge and their financial situation and our. you're updated on Edge and their financial situation, and our administration has sent them a letter to make them aware of what's going on, and also sent a letter to the Department of Education. We have scheduled a board workshop, which you've already been notified, on the 13th at 9:00 AM, October 13th at 9:00 AM, and we will have representatives here.
I'm not going to be here.
From the Edge School to report back to you their status and what they're doing to address that. So with that, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And just also want to share, it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month as well.
Thank you.
And, and I think the football players like it better than anybody. They like wearing that pink, the pink outfit, so just wanted to throw that in there, having gone through that myself.
It is, it is Abuse Awareness Month, too, child abuse.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay, yes.
And it is archery season in the state of Florida.
Okay. Archery season, okay. Okay, if, if there is nothing else to come before the board, we are.